You ready? Okay. Good evening, welcome to the City of Groton Special Committee of the Hole.
We're in progress.
Good evening, welcome to the City of Groton Special Committee of the Hole Meeting for Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Present are Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Rashad Carter, Counselor Norris, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Steve Sheffield, absent are Counselor McCabe and President, also City Clerk Edward Chaco.
Okay, so the referral we have is for the American Rescue Plan Act. So we've given you some informa-- I'd given you some information before, and we've talked briefly about ARPA funds and designation and usage. And one of the things we said was, once the budget is complete, that we would start having special meetings in order to discuss the ARPA funds and where to spend them and the direction that the council wants to go. So that's what we're starting today, and we will probably have at least one special meeting a month until we get through all of this. Currently, we have $2.6 million has been allocated. We have until the end of 20-- year man now, 22-- till 2024 to spend all the money, or actually to get it encumbered, to get the money encumbered. Is it encumbered or spent?
It's encumbered, I believe.
Okay, I think it's-- that's what I thought I read was encumbered. Okay? In the very beginning, when you get into the acceptable use of funds for local government under the American Rescue Fund, there were sections A, B, C, and D. A was to respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19, where its negative economic impacts, including assistance to household, small businesses, and nonprofits, were A to impact in industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. B was to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of local government that are performing such essential work or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. C for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenues of such local government due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. Or D to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So we started out with those categories. And then we basically set it up and had categories for you guys to vote on. And in the voting, we come up with a form similar to this. And residence was number one, small businesses was number two, infrastructure broadband was number three, tourism, travel, hospitality, EDC, park program, infrastructure was number four, municipal social services was number five, and nonprofit social services was number six. And with that, we set aside-- I set about to have an internal committee. And we reached out, there were several organizations that reached out to us. And then internally, we reached out to the department heads, and that resulted in a form that looks similar to this that everybody should have. And the bucket type is government services, infrastructure, nonprofit, social services, residents, small business, and then tourism, travel, hospitality, and parks. We-- the internal group went through. We also requested that department heads fill out a form. We developed a form that we vetted through the council on the project description, the cost, priority level, project impact to the community, has this project qualify under ARPA interim final rule, Section 2 Eligible Uses. So that is how this came about. And then there came out a final ruling, and one of the things that changed in the final ruling was how to calculate the loss of government services due to loss of revenue. And what they did was, they said you can take a one-- you could take a $10 million is the minimum, and then you don't have to justify every single penny after that. It's the $10 million. And since we had 2.6, then we automatically meet the requirements for the $10 million. And what that allows us to do is look at other CIPs that could be added on top of this. So where we are right now, when you look at this, it has $3.6 million. We have 2.6 allotted. And then Ron and I were talking about this, and there are additional capital projects that will be brought forth to the council for consideration to add into this. Is that accurate? Do you want to add some more?
Correct, no, just when this list was originally put together, like you had said, that was before the final ruling came out, where we determined that we did not fit that category of revenue loss. And then, like the mayor said, with the final ruling came, they did the standard deduction, where you don't have to justify anything up to that $10 million number. So we made the election, when we did our reporting, our first round of reporting, that we were going to use that deduction. And one of the things that did come out of that was, just because you did make that election, it doesn't mean that's the only bucket that you can use. You can still use the other buckets as well. So that did come out in one of the FAQs after.
Right. Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot.
I don't know if we maybe got that in a previous week, but that was not in our packet this week.
Nope, this was given to you a while back, because I assumed that you had it.
Way a while back.
Well, but you have it. Now, I can get it back, I can print this out. I can get Edward to print it out tomorrow, and we can get it back to you for this. Tonight's discussion was meant more as a high level to talk about philosophy and where you guys want to go, the direction you want to go in. And let me be a little more specific in that. Do you want me to bring in everybody that has a line item here to justify why their line item is on here? Or are there certain ones that you're interested in? Do you want to go through? Do you, as a council, want to say, you know, for example, Counselor Carter could go, here are my top five, Counselor Piazza, here are my top five, Counselor Norris, here are my top five, Deputy Mayor, here are my top five, Counselor Sheffield, here are my top five, and then see where they go out that way? I mean, I'm open to any and all suggestions, Deputy Mayor Depot, and then Counselor Carter.
Just in general, because that happens fairly often, that we get something in advance. Can we maybe via email get that document and say, this would be useful to have at tonight's meeting? Because I usually bring documents from previous meetings, but I didn't bring that one.
Okay, yep, I agree. That's my fault for not sending out and letting you guys know. Because I knew you had it. I probably should have prompted you to bring it with you. But Ron and I talked about this being more of a high level and maybe not actually getting in to the details. If you want to get into the details on it, I can get this run off now.
No, that's fine.
And you guys can have as much or as little of this as you want. Because I want, you know, this is your show. Counselor, I'm going to do Counselor Carter first, and then Counselor Sheffield. I'll do you next. Counselor Carter, you have the floor.
So as far as I'm-- as far as, I mean, at least I'm concerned, as far as the American Rescue Plan, you know, I-- to me, I think that, I know you mentioned on infrastructure and certain things, right? And with me, what I usually typically just go back on is if, okay, is if we, is if COVID and all the things that we lost over the last couple of years, right, with the city's infrastructure and certain things that we need infrastructurally and things, and projects and whatnot, right? Did that affect our way of how we do business as far as loss as opposed to, like, the residents and the certain things that we've lost, our constituents and the people residents of Groton City? So I look at it as, like, my-- personally, my top things would be residential, like, our residents as opposed to infrastructure. I, for one, don't even think that infrastructure should be in this, because I think that we're pretty self-sustaining as far as with the utility, et cetera, to get certain things done regardless, with these funds or not. You know, I look at it as, if we didn't have these funds with certain things, would that be detrimental to the city's infrastructure? And I don't think the answer is yes. I think we'd be okay without these funds. So with me, I think the priority to me is, you know, what can we do for the people, you know, the businesses that actually lost some, that lost out on something over the years, and the residents, as far as, you know? That's just my input. So like I said, infrastructure is no to me, you know?
Okay. Counselor Sheffield, you have the floor.
Yes, I remember you gave us the list of items that we wanted to possibly do for projects with this $2.6 million. I think it was like a three, four-page chart of things that we could use the money for that you gave us a while back. And I remember Deputy Mayor Depot mentioning items that she would like to see done. I never heard speaking about that. Is that what you're bringing up now, that you have now, Mayor?
Yes, all the input that we-- the inputs that we got from the council have been included, as far as I'm aware, in this form that we have here. There's a cover sheet, and then there's a separate section on government services, infrastructure broadband, municipal social services, nonprofit, social services, residents, small business, and tourism, travel, hospitality, EDC, park program, infrastructure. So we have that. And then we have the separate sheets that are basically the request for the justification of these line items that we have for the council to look at.
And the next thing would be, would we consider putting together a workshop similar to what we've done in the past for, you know, bond money, to sit down, how we want to allocate the bond money? This could be something that we can set up a workshop in, like, a Saturday morning or something like that to go over things and, you know, see what priorities we can do.
Well, I'm not against a workshop. We can do a workshop. I was kind of hoping that we could get this done during a special committee of the holes, set aside a couple hours at a time. And-- but it's up to the council, whatever the council decides that they-- however the council decides they want to do this. In the past, work-- I've found workshops sometimes to be beneficial, and sometimes the workshops, we just got wrapped around the axle, and the workshops were not as fruitful as all of us had hoped. But I will defer to the request of the council. If the council wants workshops, we can do that. We can meet together on a Saturday or whatever time, whenever you want to do it. Or, like I said, I would like to try to get to this at least once a month with a special cow-- excuse me, Special Committee of the Hole to do this. But I also don't want to drag this out too far. We're already one year into this, and we have not allocated any funds. So it's not-- this is not emergent, so please don't get that. But I would like to start moving forward so we can get in a direction-- because one of the things in the very beginning, we talked about different things, and the recommendation from the council was, don't bring us bits and pieces, bring us a plan. And that's what this is. This is the plan for council to review. Ron, did you want to-- you don't have to, but did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
No, I think you were spot on with it. Like you said, just trying to get a direction of how to proceed with what the council wants to do to try to make-- try to make this the most effective and efficient way possible.
Right. Anybody? Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot.
I think if I'm hearing Counselor Sheffield correctly, if we want to solicit input from the public, timing-wise, doing a workshop on a different day may not generate much attendance, because it's the summertime. I know that the town council solicited input via email and, I think, phone caller, like, that kind of input. I do think if we're doing discussions here, we can maybe put on the city website the link to the YouTube channel of our discussion, and then solicit and say, if you have any input on what we discussed, where we're aiming these funds, and then put up the contact info, and then people can share their input. I mean, I obviously encourage people's input on anything in general, but this specifically, I think it is good to encourage residents' input on these things. But I don't know how effective it would be at this-- in this season of time to try to even schedule a workshop. I don't think we would have good attendance.
Well, and let me address the input portion of this. We've asked for input. It's not like we haven't asked for input. In the very beginning, the city and town jointly, we went to the senior center, and we had a workshop, if you will, out here in our foyer to get information from people. And we got some information. In addition to that, Sierra has sent us-- Sierra Patrick has sent out information asking for additional input. So I do think we've received some input. If you want to get additional input, we can look at how you want to get that. But I do think we've already asked for some input and have received some. Ron, or--
And not to speak for Counselor Sheffield, but I think we just called those meetings. They were-- they were committee of the whole meetings, but we just called them workshops. They were internal, they weren't-- it wasn't like a public hearing, when we did the capital stuff.
Right.
When we had those Saturday morning, trying to figure out how to prioritize capital projects.
And you're right, they were committee of the holes.
Yeah, we just labeled it as a workshop.
Right. Counselor Piazza.
I just have two things. So, I mean, I looked at this, that we received, but at that time then, and then maybe a couple times breathed through it and looked at, but never thoroughly, like, thought it through. So, I mean, to make a decision on anything now, I don't think I would be ready for that, except to go back to it and look at it. Secondly, I think, when I talk to different people in reference to-- or if they bring up something in the city, it does not seem that they're in tune with the Groton City webpage for some reason. I don't know if they just don't tap into it. It's not something they get regularly. So, I mean, since we're so involved in the city with the food distribution boxes, and also Branford Manor with the thing going on, I think those would be-- and the farmer's market, those would be good sites, just maybe in the next week or two, to put that out, some type of information, or talk to the people so they have that, and maybe could jot something down. And then, you know, just give it a little bit of time, not too long, to see, because I don't know-- I mean, you said you received some input on it. I would just be interested in say, I mean, how many people actually showed up? And what we find is the same people who are getting the newsletters, the same group of people that are active within the city or volunteering? I mean, how is that?
Well, one of the challenges that we find is, how do you get information to people? And how are they getting that information? So we have a newsletter, we have Facebook, we have the website, we have print media that we've sent out. And still, there are people that fall through the cracks. I mean, that is always going to be a challenge of a business or a municipality, is how do you get your message out? And how does it get out to the people that really want it and need it? And that's always-- that is a challenge. So Counselor Carter, you had a comment?
Yeah, so, I mean, just-- and I'm thinking, you know, and based off your first statement, and I'm just thinking, how do we use this first hour as the best use of time, you know? And I think what-- correct me if I'm wrong, is I don't think that we need the paperwork in front of us to kind of know where we want to use these funds, you know? And I think, and this is just something that I can add, I think it might do us a good service to us, you know, do what we've been elected for, right? And kind of speak for our constituents and kind of-- with the information from what we know and based off just living here, like, what do we need? What are some of the things that, you know, we did not want to bring to council? Because we know that there was no funding, you know? What are some of the things that we know that we've needed for a while in the city that we haven't touched up on because of funding, you know? And if we bring those forward, we can all come to an agreement if that's something we're going to push forward or not. I think that's the easiest way to go. Once we formulate some things, I think, once-- but before we decide and pull the trigger, we could do something similar to what the ground public schools did, you know? I'm just thinking of when they were trying to name the two new elementary schools, you know? They came up with three, three or four different names, and they sent out emails to every parent. And every parent was able to do a survey, log on to a survey, and just pick the top two, you know? And that was that. I don't know how much that cost, but I think that something like that would be paid for through the funds, you know? But, you know, I-- there's something quick that comes to mind is, you know, we were looking at entrance-- entrance signs, like, the entryway signs of, you know, the access points of entering the city. This was a couple of years back. And the financial aspect came to as far as how much they would cost. And at that time, we're like, all right, well, maybe we better pump the brakes on that, you know? I think that something like that actually fits the mold of, you know, these funds with tourism or whatever, you know? Things like that, you know? It's a start, you know? So I think it might be better to go that route. Like, what are we hearing as councilmen-- as council members? You know, what have we heard over the years? What do you believe? Like, what do you believe that's needed, without looking at that paper?
What hasn't been used for me?
No, well, for you-- well, for you, I would say, okay, the Merls, right? You're big on the Merls, right? Based off of what? Based of what? Based off-- it doesn't have to be a committee. Based off what he just said about the funds, that's easily something that can be paid for, for the funds, you know? That's from him. To me, that's like the easiest way to do it, you know? As far as what we think, you know? That's my two cents.
Okay, so where do we go from here? Counselor Norris?
If I may. I think we've had, or we've extended invitations to our residents for input. If we were to seek another time or level of input, I would dare say, do we make public the list that you and your staff have created? Invite the public to a committee of the whole meeting? And whoever appears obviously can give their few minutes of input. We discuss it as a council at the same meeting. And then, Mayor, you take all those conversations to your staff and formulate motions to approve what you and your staff determine Because I think most folks may not understand the concept or the purpose behind the rescue funds, but they may understand the projects or items in your list and say, we're looking to fund these. What do you think? And then take that as input and then move forward. But I would dare say, you probably could have realized that a lot of what you're looking to fund is exactly what the residents are thinking.
So should we try to pare this down first, though? Because if you look at this, we're at $3.613,946.73. We only have $2.6 million. So--
That's why I said it might be good to know where we stand as a council first, you know? So he can, on their end, possibly kind of dwindle that list, you know? That's no different than what I said even with the schools, you know? That started off with 20, 25 names that nobody knew about, right? And then it went to like four names, and everyone's, okay, that's that, you know? But-- and that's just to go back to what you first said.
I understand.
We have to do what we think, and then present that. You know, do you see what I'm saying?
Okay. All right, hold on.
There might be some outreach, too. Like, we think opening it up, because essentially, they could be here right now, essentially, right?
They could.
So I think it's not more than just opening it up. I think if we're going to do that, we designate which one we're going to do it at, but we also need some outreach to actually do it. And if that's a matter of us just kind of knocking on some doors and saying, hey, today, or next, whatever, this is what's going to happen. These are the items that are up for whatever, that are up for whatever. Please come to this committee of the whole meeting to express what you would like to move forward out of these items.
Okay. Want to go here for Deputy Mayor Depot?
So I think Counselor Carter was the one that said that, like, every counselor, if we brought, like, our top five items to that same-- that same thought process, maybe our bottom couple? So, because I think that there may be some projects that some of us would go, this maybe could be funded a different way, or this isn't really on the level of importance or whatever. That might make it easier to eliminate some, even though it sounds mean to say, like, bottom couple. But I think-- I think that even more, because we might all have the same top five. But I think we also could do a bottom five, or however-- I don't know how many-- I don't remember how many are on that list, but something like that might make it quicker to eliminate the ones that-- because if we all have the same bottom two, that'd kind of be an easy thing to go, all right, well, those two are out.
Okay. Counselor Norris, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was only going from the standpoint that I don't know what dwindling, dwindling the list means. Because if we have 2 million, 2.5--
2.6.
2.6. If we dwindle the list to 2.6, what are we asking input for on? Because then we've already itemized our 2.6.
Yeah, but how do you know what the cost of that's going to be? You don't know. Just because we have a list, that doesn't equate to a cough.
I'm assuming it does. That's what I'm assuming.
With inflation and everything, you can't-- you can't-- I mean, you would know this. If you have a list, I mean, unless-- unless that list is automatically attached insofar as how much these are going to cost, how do you know? You don't know.
Well, yeah, I-- oh, sorry.
No, you're right.
I do understand the estimates, but the point I'm trying to make is if we have $2.6 million, and we create a list that's 2.6.
No, not of 2.6. See, I'm looking at-- I'm looking at a list of what we need, not the money asked of us.
Okay, got it. All right. Got it. Got it. Got it. So then I come back to why we dwindling the list, then?
To build it to 2.6. 2.6 is what it costs. And you know, right? If you told-- I have 5 kids, right? If I-- in August-- if I told my 5 kids, and they have a certain amount of money, what do you need? They're going to think of a list that's this big, right? And certain things are going to be up here that they really need, and there's going to be some certain things that they just threw in there because their daddy has money to pay for it, right? So we need to come up with that list that we're kind of what we think we need, right? And weed out the things that can kind of be past the bone. Because everything-- I think we're under assumption that everything on that list is something that we absolutely need. And I don't think that's the case.
Do you want to go, or do you want me to let Counselor Sheffield? Counselor Sheffield, you have the floor?
Yeah, and that's where, again, getting together as far as trying to, you know, allocate how we want to, you know, utilize the funds. I think that's the part where a little, you know, workshop piece gets together to kind of get an idea of how, you know, what we want, how we want to prioritize, and then put it, you know, sort it in fine print, and then bring it to the committee, and then bring it to the vote. So that's kind of how I would like to start that process. So just since we don't really know what we want to do at the moment, but to set a blueprint how to get the ball rolling. Isn't this the workshop?
Well, it's-- this is kind of a workshop, talking about-- I mean, we-- so Counselor Sheffield, let me put it in perspective, because you've been here when we've done workshop, for example, how are we going to spend CIP? And so we said, okay, we want you guys to rank all these things. What's the most important, and what's the least important? Every one of them got ranked the most important. And that workshop ended up being a waste of time, because we were no more-- because we were no more focused at the end of the workshop than we were at the very beginning of the workshop, right? Now, there have been other workshops that we've, we've had where we said, okay, we're gonna do one, two, threes. Everybody goes, put your one, two, threes in, then we order them and then we do a cutoff and say, okay, sorry, I know that was very important to you, but in the group it wasn't, we're not gonna do that and we're gonna focus. I, I, I do think there's benefit to, I'll talk to Edward and make sure everybody gets what I have in my hand. You may already have it, but you may not. I will make sure that you get it, I will ask for your top five and your bottom five. And we can start from there. Do you think that might get us going?
Yeah, like I said, we'll, we'll update this list, cause like we said, this list was done before we made that, that, before that final ruling came out with the other additional projects and then get that out.
Now, we put the additional project on, that's gonna put us even higher than three point six.
And that's, that's one of those, well, I, I believe, I think with the additional projects, I think we should, and again, I don't know what the, I, 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 I'm ignorant to the fact.
I'm, sorry, I am ignorant to the fact of actually what everything on there as far as the special projects. So I probably shouldn't be just shutting down the special projects, you know? So it would be good to, to know, but i- in my opinion, right? And I'm, like I said, from what I know from the city.
Yep.
Right? I know that the city would sustain without this money. Would you say that's correct? This, the government, city government.
So, so you're asking me if I didn't have two point six million dollars?
Yes.
Would we continue on?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm looking at, I know that.
As a council, have budgeted for that. We, and that's in our budget.
Of the mayor and his council, right?
Yep.
We're not in a bind.
That is correct.
Saying is that I look at it as that, this is, these are rescue funds, right? And I think that should be handled and, and, and we, we should disperse those funds as we receive those funds, right? And I'm looking at the infrastructure and certain things that maybe pushed off or whatever, like we, we, we have those funds to do that. You know, it's gonna help, help us out, but ultimately you look at, you, you look at the utilities, I mean, yeah, the utilities, we added it. We, we, not, we had to, right, hike the utilities a bit, right? We had to discern things a bit for inflation and whatnot, right? So I think that, in my opinion, there's certain special projects and things that me, and again, in my opinion, that shouldn't even be considered. I think that we need to look at the businesses and residents of the city who had been gravely hurt from these past three years, that's where I'm gonna go with it.
Well, and one of the things we could do, Ron and I have talked about this, is we could, we could say, uh, for example, I'm gonna go for my, my thing here. You set aside a hundred thousand dollars for residents, you set aside a hundred thousand dollars for small business. And then we get March Fondulas from Social Services to come in. The town has already given some services there. We ask, what does she need for the city? We set that up, earmarked just for city residents only, right? Because the town has done it for all the town, including the city. But we would earmark our money just for city residents. And then after that, once you, once we've taken care, because the top two, sorry. The top two items, residents is number one, small businesses is number two. So once you've taken care of those, set that money aside, then you have the rest of the money up to the two point six. That could be for government services, infrastructure, nonprofit, social services such as like, uh, the Bill Library, the ARC, uh, economic development, those kinds of things, right? Does that, does that kind of make sense?
I, I hear what you're saying.
And, and does that kind of fit into what you were talking about?
I, I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
I, 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 I hear, I hear what you're saying. You know, I, I think that's another, I, I, there's, when you meant, mentioned the human services with the town and I, I, I get that, but I think it's a little different with the city, you know? I, I, I mean, yeah, I get that. I'm a little thinking outside the box a little bit, you know what I mean, you know? And it would be good, like, even on that, it would be good to say, like, I know the town has our things and earmarked for city residents, which they do help the gra, the town, right? But based off the funds, I mean, w- w- we could also possibly hire somebody part-time to go around and help city kids out or go into Branford and help kids out, you know, somebody do their homework or whatever. There's certain pilot programs that we can do with this money, you know? Um, but, uh, that, that's a whole nother workshop type discussion, you know?
It, it is, but I, I will caution the council on establishing a, a, establishing a program, excuse me, with grant money that does not have sustainability. And, and, and what I mean by that specifically is, a lot of times people say, oh, look, we got these grants, we got, we got found money, let's go spend all our money. And they do not think about the maintenance cost down the road of what it's gonna cost to maintain that program.
Yeah.
So I, I.
I, I, I got that, I'm familiar with, with all that, but, but that, that's if you have the mindset that it's gonna last forever, you know what I mean? There's several nonprofits that know, okay, and say it, this is a two-year grant, you know, whatever, like right then and there, you know what I'm saying? And I'm just, I'm just, but, but I get what you're saying.
Okay.
But that's, that, that, that's where I am as far as with the funds. Like I said, and again, I'm ignorant to the fact, there might be certain things or certain, there might be certain projects that are detrimental, but I, I, I think that, I know you long enough, that there are certain things really detrimental, they've already been handled, you know?
I understand.
Yeah, so that, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
You know?
Is there anyone else? Cause I don't wanna, I wanna make sure if I get a chance to speak. Uh, Councilor Piazza.
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, so just two things is, when you were saying a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, those, that was just figures you're just throwing off, not?
Those are figures that we were throwing off that are, that are on here.
In there, okay, cause I haven't seen it in a while.
Have to be a hundred thousand, it could be fifty thousand, it could be whatever. I, I will tell you that, the, so for the, for the residents and for the businesses, we're going to use the same program that the town has. So the town has a program for vetting those requests. And so we're gonna funnel them, so if there's a request that comes to us, that goes through the town, so we get consistency and so we don't get into double dipping, right? So the town will say, okay, where do you live? One of the things that they'll do is they'll find out, where do you live? And if you live in the city, then the city funding would cover that. And then therefore, they, that service is provided one time, instead of somebody going to the town, getting it and then coming back to us and getting it. We talked about that in our team and Ron and I have talked about it separately, but also in the team about if the, if the town has a process, and they do, to, to use that, and I talked to John Burke. John Burke is in agreement, uh, Mayor Juan Melendez is in agreement to allow the city to use that same vetting process. So, but, but that was just, the hundred thousand was just a number to put, you know, to put there. And right now, the town, the town has not come to me and said, five people from the city have asked for this or for that. And when I've reached out to small businesses that I go see and I talk to, uh, a lot of them said, well, we've already got PPP loans or we've got this loan or whatever, so we're okay. And also, when you, when you look at the timeframe, didn't we, wasn't, didn't the timeframe give us a little bit of angst? Right, cause it wasn't, the timeframe was for after the COVID period, right? Not during it? On the, on the interim ruling?
No, for that, for those ones, it was.
Oh, it was during the COVID, okay.
It was for the residents and the businesses, it was during the COVID. The, the other one was for, um, supplies and stuff incurred.
That.
By, by the municipality.
Okay, that's right, alright. Sorry, I was getting those two confused. Uh, where are we?
So my second one was, uh, off of what Councilor Norris was saying in reference to if we were to bring people in and so forth and so on, like the public come in. But I, I would suggest that we do a Zoom link, um, cause talking to some people, even like students, when I talk to them, a couple of students have already said like, oh, we were going to, and this was after the last food distribution thing. Oh, my grandma couldn't get there because she doesn't have transportation. And they're, they don't live too far, but obviously she's not capable. So I would say a Zoom link definitely for those who can't actually physically come in here. You know, kind of put it in an inclusion thing that everybody has some way somehow to attend.
Okay. Uh. So, uh, let me ask you this. So, I, what I intend to do is I'm gonna get you this packet. I'm gonna ask for your top five, your bottom five. And then, so the question is, do you want to then talk about that amongst yourselves? Or do you want someone, a representative of either that service or that department head, to come in to pitch it?
That may be incorrect. Is, is, is Counselor, Counselor?
Councilor Carter.
Can I speak to him or no? Counsel Sheffield?
Well.
Or I'll ask you a question.
Ask me, ask the question through me and then.
I already got in trouble about that one time, a few years back. Um, when we say, or when Counselor, um, Sheffield says, um, uh, whatever type, what did he said, workshop, right? Uh, the second time I was thinking, okay, are, are you, i- is he thinking, is he talking about directors and employees and heads? As opposed to, as opposed to, uh, um, uh, civilians, right? So, uh, you know, like civilians, cause when he said workshops, I thought he was talking about like, like, like constituents or civilians or residents. I didn't know that he was talking about, um, employees.
Okay.
So is that what he's insinuating?
I'll, I'll ask.
But I think, I think if that's the case, I think that actually might be, at least to invite them here to speak about that stuff. And actually, that actually might be important, kind of.
Them who?
Uh, uh, employees. The people giving us the list, yeah. Just, just exactly what she said.
Okay.
To explain what, what they need it for.
Councilor Sheffield, did you hear that dialogue?
What a mumble.
That we just had?
Yes, I did, and, um, it makes, it makes good sense on that part. Now, most of the workshops, obviously I've dealt with, was collectively amongst the council.
Yep.
But the bring up the park, I'm gonna have it by a specific item up for consideration, isn't a bad idea either. Uh, you never exclude it, uh, a person in the department regarding any type of funding. But normally, we looked at it collectively as a council, uh, to see what we want to, you know, uh, invest in which types of, uh, uh, things that we want going on in the city. And then take it from there and then, you know, if it's, then we bring an apartment head in, see what's allocated, see how much we want to spend.
Okay.
And then go from there and then get a department head in and see if this is gonna be sufficient. If it's not, um, you know, we can go back to the drawing board and see, you know, see what additional money can come out.
I understand.
But to keep it, you know, keep the dialogue going amongst the councils, so we're all on the same page. I mean, sure, you can, you know, send us all out separately and give us a top five or bottom five. But again, we don't collectively together, how do we mesh all that? Just based on what each individual does, until we should negotiate it out together and then bring a department head in and then make something happen from there.
Okay, so you're, you're not in favor of the top five, bottom five? Recommendation, you wanna throw everybody in a room and?
I mean, it's, it's, it's okay if everybody's sort of on the same page, but if somebody's like way out, how do we bring someone else in to convince that other counselor that this is more important than, than maybe this? So that's where I feel coming together collectively to collaborate makes better sense.
Okay, other thoughts on this, Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, um, I, I do think that it's a good idea for us to up, analyze on our own what we think. Cause the thing is, we could come in with our top five and bottom five and the department head could, could convince us otherwise. So, cause we don't, obviously aren't gonna have every single detail or whatever. So I, I think it's a good idea to do maybe top five, bottom five, have, have maybe a, a committee of the whole with just the council. I'm wary to involve staff too early and waste their time, because when they come to meetings, it's extra staff time for them. And I, I personally don't like doing that if it's not gonna be worth their time, especially in the summertime. So I, I think it might be good, like Counselor Sheffield is saying, to do a group, just the council, come in with our top five, bottom five, have discussions. Because I think, you know, everyone here kind of comes from a different place, some of us have kids, some of us don't, some of us have, you know, deal in different areas. So I might come in with my bottom five and Counselor Carter might explain to me why that's not correct, because I don't have kids and he does. So I think that that might be a good idea to do just the council and then plan after that, we might be able to collectively say, okay, these are the staff members that we'd like to speak with.
Okay, I'll continue in a second with Counselor Piazza.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think it's a good idea, but I think to even expedite that even faster is to do an email. Have us, give us like this week to look at our packets, get the packets to us, look at it and then form in our own mind, our top five and bottom five. And maybe through an email, share what we're thinking, so at least we.
Can't, can't do that.
Oh, can't do that, okay.
And the reason, for those of you that are watching, and a reminder to the council, is we cannot, if you, once you start sharing things and deliberating things that are supposed to be discussed in private, in public, and you're doing it in private, now you've just had a meeting without properly posting and without engaging the public.
Well, I wasn't saying deliberate, I was just gonna say our list.
I know, but if you start, if you start sharing with each other, you're, you're.
Well, I, I, maybe I misheard you then.
Tom Hennig will strongly discourage that.
I hear you. But, well, I thought I had, maybe I misheard you when you were saying that if you sent something out to us that you, we could pick our top five, bottom five, and I, I was thinking it was the email thing, maybe I misheard you.
Nope.
Okay.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna send this to the council. Edward, I'll give this packet to you. Uh, we'll send it out and then I will ask the council to go through this. Top, make your top five, bottom five, keep it to yourself. And then we will either at a special Cal or at a workshop, and I haven't quite gone, quite figured that out yet, cause we'll need to schedule a workshop that, that all the counselors can attend if we're doing this like on a Saturday or something like that. And sometimes Saturdays are, uh, are a challenge, particularly in the summer. And so, well, you have to figure that out or have a special Cal. Then you bring your top five, bottom five, or if you wanna send, if you send them to me individually, you send them to me individually, I can then, Edward, Edward and I, or the city clerk and I can, uh, thank you, compile them and put them together, right? If you rank them, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, and then we'll put them in there, we'll do an numeric ranking and then it'll, it'll rank up. And what you're gonna have is, you're probably gonna have ten or fifteen items, right? Unless all, unless all of your five match. And they probably, well, but Counselor Piazza, did that answer your question?
Yes, so, so with that, can I summarize that you're gonna say that you're gonna do that? We're gonna, we could send it to you individually, but then the next step would be that we just as a council would meet and then later, as Deputy Mayor was saying, then bring in the, the department heads. On what we're basically agreeing and that, that these are our top five, bottom five, or where our questions are.
Right.
Okay.
Counselor Carter.
What I'm getting at is that you wanna have a meet, the same meeting that we're kind of just doing, supposed to be today, right? That's basically what it is.
Well, but today, today.
But we are, according to him, we, we've already ranked them, right? So.
Well, no, you, no, you, you, okay, so.
No, I know that, but as far as our discussion, I'm saying, as far as our discussion, we could be having that now.
But then within a category, we have different things that we're here. And then now what I'm asking you is to, you know, your top five may all be in one category or they may be scattered.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that, but I, what I'm saying though is that, like, for the purpose of, of like what we did for this meeting right at the beginning, you wanted us to kind of talk about what we actually wanted to, and not itemize, but the things that we wanted to bring forward, right?
Yes, sir.
And I, I think we could have had that discussion, I, I mean, I know I brought out what I wanted, I don't know if anybody else did. Uh, I mean, but, so, so, I'm still getting at, even based off of those, what, from where I stand, even looking at those itemized things, right? Without getting more information as far as why they need it, cause again, I'm ignorant to the fact on why that's on that list, right?
Right.
I'm still gonna have a top ranking of my beliefs and what I think. So what I'm saying is that I, 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 I get the purpose of this in the next meeting, but I think there needs to be some more substance in the next meeting. And, and again, I'm not trying to waste anybody's time, but maybe we may be able to break off, say, um, and I don't know how many different department heads sent that out, but maybe we could for the next one, have like three department heads kind of just briefly, ten minutes apiece, you know, explain whatever, you know? And then the next time, then three more, ten minutes apiece. And then that way, we get more of a just of actually truly ranking what the needs are, you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying?
I do. Let me, let me gather the information from council. Once we get the top five, bottom five, and we go through, we compile it, and we have it set up, then I can meet with my committee internal, and we can decide what the best way is to then move forward and approach it with the council.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, that's good. Because another thing what we don't want to do is we don't want to waste our time at the end phase.
No.
We got departments thinking that they may be getting funds or some thing, and then next thing you know, it gets axed down, because they could have explained this at the beginning.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Right, yep, I understand. Uh, Ron.
Just because I know we're running towards the end. I, I get the point with the infrastructure, but I do want to just make one point where if we don't, if there's things that don't get funded through, that could be funded through this or decided to be funded through this, it'll end up being on the obligation of the taxpayers and the upcoming budget. So, so there's, there's a balance, so I get, I'm not.
I get that, but that's where I come from, I need to know, okay, when is this happening? You know what I'm saying? Does this, is this staying ASAP, or is this need to be, you know, is this ten years from now when people aren't going to be, you know? Things might be different, different from now to ten years ago when the economy sustains, you, you never know. But those businesses will answer those questions for me.
Right.
It might change my mind. And, and that's why I said it's kind of actually good to have them now rather than later. But I get that.
Correct.
I'm receptive, I'm open to that, that's why I'm, you know?
Okay. Any other comments on this? Counselor Sheffield, anything else?
Uh, I have nothing.
Okay, Counselor Piazza?
I'm also.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I'm also.
Counselor Norris? Ron, do you have anything else?
No, but I think we have a direction forward.
I, I do too. Uh, city clerk, do you have anything you want to add to this? Because you and I are going to be knee deep into this.
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, let me get to my agenda. So the next thing is I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, we are adjourned, and the next meeting starts at seven thirty. Thank you all. This is brand new as of this afternoon. You ready? Okay. Good evening, welcome to the City of Groton Mayor and Council Meeting for Tuesday, June twenty first, twenty twenty-two. City clerk, please call the roll.
President R. Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Rashad Carter, Counselor Norris, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Sheffield, City Clerk Edward Jacobe, and Chief Jenkins. An absent is Counselor McCabe.
Okay, please stand, salute the flag. The flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any recognitions, awards, and memorials? Anything from council? Okay. Received citizens petitions.
Just, I just want to recognize the rec-.
Oh, recognitions, yes.
Sorry. Just, uh, just want to recognize all the, um, high school graduate, all, the high school graduates from the city, all in the town, but, um, the middle schoolers, the elementary schools, it's been a good couple, like last week and this week was a good, uh, it was good to see everybody together. It's their first real graduation that they've, they've had in like three years, you know? So it was good to actually see everybody, um, out enjoying themselves and be able to take pictures and enjoy a graduation, and, or if you're in elementary school, promotion, you know? I think that was good. And I, I've had, I, all of my kids, well, I had one kid, and my son's going to the high school next year, that was great. And, um, my stepdaughter, she's going to the middle school next year, so there's a couple graduations that I went to, you know? Um, it was a good time.
And we went to a promotion ceremony yesterday, it was a, it was a combined, uh, promotion and, uh, dare graduation, yesterday at Thames River Magnet School, which was just, it was a lot of fun. So you're right. This is a good time of year. Uh, anybody else on recognition, awards, and memorials? Okay, moving on. Received citizens petitions, we have none, so we'll skip response to citizens petitions. Approval of the minutes, I'll take a motion to approve the mayor and council minutes of June sixth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Communications reports, Counselor Norris.
Mayor, I attended the PAC meeting last week, and I just wanted to thank all the residents that came out to that meeting and voiced their opinion on the various topics, and I'm sure Mayor Deputy Mayor Depot will fill in the blanks if I've missed anything, but it was, it was really important as we come to the end of the fiscal year, that we thank all the Groton city residents that come out and share their experiences, give input, and volunteer on the various committees and programs that the city diligently offers. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to say, I know you're going to mention it, but, um, for the concert in the park, we've been going to the concert in the park, an absolutely wonderful, great start off, great night for the first concert. Weather was beautiful, and also we've been to the farmer's market, and we really enjoyed that, and I just keep spreading the word and spreading the word, because even like I say, even when I talk to some people, it just seems like, oh, I didn't know it was there, it was like, you ever see the tents there? Yeah, I didn't know what it was, you know? And then so I explain it to them, so.
Counselor Carter?
I'm going to report.
Okay. Counselor Sheffield?
Uh, no, I'm going to report.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. On June tenth, I attended the water treatment plant ribbon cutting. Um, that was since the last meeting, right? It feels like that was so long ago.
I know.
Um, I, I also at that time got a tour of the new water treatment plant, which includes like, they've adapted part of the old plant for new uses, it's really interesting. So if anyone gets a chance, they will do a tour, if you call and schedule it, um, with the water treatment facility, but it's really neat the way that they, you can kind of see the advancement over the years, the way that they've changed the plant, which is kind of neat to see where they started and now where they are, and how advanced all the testing is and everything. It's, it's very interesting to see where our drinking water comes from, um, and all this, they have a, a ton of staff there, which I thought was really cool, to recognize the staff that have been working for years, you know, while the plant is in transition, which I know has been, must be difficult. Um, so that was a, a really good time, uh, attending that ribbon cutting. On, um, let's see, the next thing I went to, on the fourteenth last week, uh, I attended the town council meeting where Branford Manor was discussed, um, and I think that we, um, you know, they have, there's a tax incentive agreement that is joint with town and the city, and I think that, uh, we've seemed to have a pretty good handle with the mayor's office working with the town manager's office to make sure that we're following up. The town council went over that tax incentive agreement, over the items on there that they wanted to follow up on, and I believe the town manager is, um, communicating kind of, uh, what is it, like a summary of that meeting and what the discussions were to communicate with Branford and kind of have an open dialogue. So I feel like that was a good push forward, and we're really making progress. I know that the mayor's office is continuing to work with Branford Manor to get, um, all their issues resolved, and I just want to repeat again, as I have before, if you live in Branford Manor and you have comments or complaints or any information that you would like to add to that conversation, please feel free to contact the mayor's office, um, because we, you know, our goal, at least my goal, is to resolve every possible issue so that everyone is happy and safe in the homes that they have there. Um, I would like that to be, you know, to see that through to the end, to make sure that everyone, everyone's complaints are handled and that that is a safe place to live. Um, on the sixteenth, I attended the Police and Community Together Committee meeting, uh, as did Counselor Norris, and I just want to say, the chief ran, uh, the meeting, and there were more than fifty people there in the Z House, and they were all residents, and I actually would like to, I guess this kind of goes under, um, recognition, but, um, we had a resident who is a hundred percent responsible for getting that many people there, um, George Beloga, he not, literally knocked on his neighbors' doors to get them to come give input at the meeting, and so I just want to thank him, and he volunteers for the food box distribution, and he's really interested in helping improve his community, and, uh, he puts a lot of volunteer hours in to do that, so I really appreciate him. But it was a really, I thought, really productive. I met a bunch of residents that I hadn't, uh, met before, and everyone got their chance to give input, and I feel like it was a, a productive feedback meeting from people in that neighborhood. Um, I know that we're trying to move around different neighborhoods with the PAC meeting, and that was, I think, a particularly effective one, and the chief did a great job, um, running that meeting. On the eighteenth, I attended the Juneteenth celebration here, uh, and again, I want to recognize Juliet Parker, because she organized that, and we had, um, a singer there, we had the president of Mitchell College was the keynote speaker, and there were several other speakers there as well. Uh, I did mention to Juliet that I, I'm, we're going to try next year maybe to talk to the schools and see if similar to the pride celebration, if we could maybe talk to like the history teachers, or whoever the contact person is to maybe get, um, students to attend, because it was very educational. If you were a person who didn't know what Juneteenth was, they, there was a person designated to go through that. Um, so I think it would be a great field trip for students to attend next year as well. Um, but for the inaugural celebration, Juliet did a, a great job, and, um, you know, our speakers were, were really great for that. Uh, two more things, I, um, the Groton Little League was reached, uh, reached out to me, they're looking for volunteers for their concession stand. Um, I already have one date down for myself to volunteer, uh, I have the list here tonight, if anyone of, it's like the playoff games, I think, um, it's just at Calvin Burrows, and, um, there's one experienced person in the concession stand, and then they're looking for volunteers, so you don't have to be good at it or anything, just have to be willing. Um, and they'll teach you everything you need to know to be, um, to help in the concession stand, but they really could use some volunteers, so if any of the counselors are willing to volunteer, or the clerk, um, please let me know, and, um, I can show you the list of where people are needed. Um, I think the mayor and I were going to try to work out maybe to do one of the nights together to volunteer. Um, but that would be great, because I don't, um, and again, I don't have any kids in Little League, so it'd be nice to get to know some of the kids and have them know, you know, who their, um, counselors are, I think that is, um, Town Counselor Franco is the one that's organizing that, because she has a connection to the Little League, and her goal is to kind of help us and the town council get your faces out there so that people know who their representatives are. That was kind of one of her things. Um, so I'm trying to help her do that. On, uh, this coming Friday is the food box distribution. Um, I have a list of people, uh, I think it's up to ten people now. I will be reaching out to them today or tomorrow or the next day to confirm for their delivery, so if anyone else is looking to get a food box delivered, please contact the mayor's office, and we can add you to the list easily. Um, it doesn't take long, it's easy to add you to, and we just throw the food in the back of my truck and I go deliver it. So, um, please contact us if you could use food, if you can, if you are mobile and you can get there, it is at St. John's at twelve thirty, um, on the twenty-fourth. you can get there. It is at St. John's at 12:30, um, on the 24th, and that's all.
Okay. City Clerk, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. All right. So the.
May I reflect off of? Yeah, you did, but I just wanted to ask, um, so when they were asked about the Little League, are, is it just they're looking for counselors, or is it any volunteer?
I think they'll take any volunteers.
Is there a age limit? I mean, like, you have to be a certain age in order to volunteer?
I'm not sure, but I can 100% message Counsel Franco after. Thank you.
Okay. So the Little League thing, I think is a good idea. It gives us an opportunity to, to get out with our constituents and talk to them and talk to the kiddos, so that's always a good thing. Um, so let me start out with Branford Manor. In front of you is the latest information I have from Ledzlight regarding the mold situation and the testing and the status of the mold. I know that was specifically requested by Counselor Norris, I think at the last meeting. So that's the latest that I have. I got that this afternoon. So, and, and as I get updates on it, I will continue. So I have continued to meet with Branford Management locally, and I have, uh, also met with, uh, related senior management who came down to talk to the town council, and we've talked about this whole effort going forward. So there's several things that are going on. One, you have the mold issue, and we're the, so they've sampled the mold. I'm waiting on the mold results. They're going to have a remediation plan. They are not going to remediate the mold with people in the apartments. So people will be relocated either to a hotel or to another apartment or something like that. So if you have any questions on that, you can get back to me. On any of the things we've talked about tonight, or will continue to talk about, you can call me at 860-446-4103, or mayor@cityofgroton- ct.gov, or you can PM, PM me at Mayor Keith Hedrick on Facebook. Um, I do follow Facebook. I do pay attention to Facebook, and when I see things that are not being addressed, then I will capture that, send that in an email, and get those things addressed. It is very important to me that we have the conditions so that, uh, the moms and their families have a safe place to live. So the mold is something we're looking at. Other thing we're looking at is, is the occupants, not occupancy, but the use of the basements. Right now, Branford and Related is looking at closing out the basements, but I've been talking to them from the beginning, Deputy Mayor Depot and I have been talking to them, and what I would like to see done is get the PEX problems resolved, so you replace all the, all the piping so you don't have any leaks. Then you go down to your visual sample, physical sample, and verify there's either mold or there's not mold. If there's not mold, then you go to the next step. If there is mold, then you remediate it, then you test it to ensure that the remediation was effective, then you go to the next step. The next step is then to seal the basements. There's a, a sealer type paint out there that seals them and waterproofs the basements, and you do it in white. That way, uh, if there is mold, it starts to come back, you can identify it right away and remediate it. In addition to that, they need to set up joint inspections of the basements with residents and Branford Management, and then, so they're both there at the same time, they see the same thing, and then you document that inspection on a sheet of paper, and both of them sign it. Either you, you, you identify something that's a problem, and then that gets translated to a work order so it can be resolved, or there are no issues on this, this inspection, and you go to the next inspection. My recommendation initially are every month to have the inspections until such time that they can move out to a, to a broader frequency. In addition to that, there are other maintenance issues that, that are being addressed, that are being resolved, and I'm bringing those, and we're tracking those, and the mold. We are working with Ledzlight. Ledzlight has mold cases that they're actively pursuing, and that they are working with Branford Manor in order to remediate. So there's a lot that's going on. There's a lot that's going on behind the scenes, um, and we are going to resolve these issues and get it so that people are comfortable and safe living there without fear of retaliation or anything else. So there's a, there are a lot of things that we are looking at, but I am actively working with the residents, and I am actively working with Branford Manor and with, uh, related management. And in Branford Manor, there's a new Bran, there's a new onsite manager, Gloria, who is there, and I met with her on Friday, and I think we, uh, we had an opportunity to talk, and, and we appear to be at first glance on the same page, so that's good news. Uh, continuing on, uh, oh, and John Burt and I, I will re, John Burt and I have started to reach out, and we are going to have tours. There's, I think, five apartments that we want to tour, and we'll bring staff with us, so the appropriate staff with us so that we can identify if there's any issues, and we're going to probably do that in the next couple weeks. This week, starting tomorrow, from the 22nd until the 24th, HUD is coming in to do, uh, their triennial inspection on, uh, Branford. And then on the 29th, there is a, uh, open house, for lack of a better term, at 11 o'clock in the morning and at 5 o'clock in the afternoon at the community center. So council is more than welcome to attend that if you want to. Uh, related management will be coming down, senior Branford management will be coming down, as well as local, in an effort to talk to the, uh, residents and get feedback from the residents, and start rebuilding and regaining trust with the residents. I had a, uh, public information session on the parking management plan that, as a result of the, uh, South Yard Assembly Building is being rebuilt, and so that was last week. Also last week, we issued bonds. So we issued bonds for 28 million. We got $113 million in offers on the bond. So we were able to negotiate with those, uh, agencies in order to lower the interest rate so that it was better in our favor of the money that we're getting for them. So, uh, that was actually pretty cool. Saturday, uh, was Juneteenth. I agree with Deputy Mayor Depot, if it were not for Juliet Parker, that event would not have occurred here. So I thank her from the bottom of my heart for all the effort that she did. She, you know, in the very beginning, when we decided we were going to have a ceremony here, I talked to her and asked her if she would help guide me through this, and, uh, she did an absolute tremendous job, and we're already planning for next year's, uh, Juneteenth celebration. Again, the food drive is just coming Friday from 12:30 to 2:30. Farmer's Market has started, started last week, last Tuesday, but it's every Tuesday from 3 until 6. The beach is now open with, uh, lifeguards and the concession stand. Summer cabarets are now happening, uh, once a month down at, uh, Eastern Point Beach. The, um, concerts in the park started Friday with the Cartels. Last Six is playing on the 24th, and Mass Confusion is on the 21st. So, let's see, is there anything else I need to, so if you need, if you want, if you're out there and you want additional information, we have information in the newsletter, we have it on the website, and we have it on Facebook. And then again, you can also reach out to me, 860-464-446-4103, or mayor@cityofgroton-ct.gov, or you can private message me on Facebook at Mayor Keith Hedrick. And that's it for communication reports. Committee referrals?
None, Your Honor.
Okay. New, uh, is there any other, anything else? Okay. New business, Counselor Norris?
Your Honor, R-220675, therefore be resolved that the mayor and council authorize the City of Groton to purchase monitors and equipment for the dispatch center upgrade from Communications Plus LLC 84 Salem Turnpike, Norwich, Connecticut, for a total cost of $20,865 and no cents to be paid from the accepted fiscal year 2022 State of Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Nuclear Safety Emergency Planning Fund. ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So tonight is Chief Jenkins' night. All three of these, uh, motions are for the police department. So Chief, if you can give us some background on this?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, like Mr. Counselor Norris said, this monies were, these monies were funded by the Nuclear Safety Emergency Program, which they do every year. Uh, since we participate in the events and we're within the zones, uh, the total amount was $24,795 and 0 cents, which was approved on August 2nd, 2021. What we are requesting now is that the funds be utilized for the dispatch center, which would be the monitors up on the dispatch center, which will help us view the exit and evacuation routes within the city to make sure that their control of the streets are passable, there is no water over the roads, any conditions that we need to be aware of, because certain monitors up in the dispatch center are not supposed to be seen by the public. So what we're going to do is we're going to dress it up, make it easier for the dispatchers to monitor. Everything is up there, so everything can go efficiently and smoothly as possible, and nobody gets hurt.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Mine is a nitpicky clarification. Um, the general wording is usually approved fiscal year budget, because accepted and approved mean two different things.
Okay. All right. We'll make that.
I know that's nitpicky, but all of our ordinances usually say approved, because we approved that budget.
Absolutely. We did approve that money. So the money has been approved, meaning the, the funding was accepted by the council. Now we're authorizing the expenditure of the funds for the specific, uh, purpose. You're right. Uh, we'll make a note of that and change that. Okay, so we'll change from accepted to approved. Are you okay with that as a motioner?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and a second, or you're okay here? Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Counselor Piazza?
This might already have been discussed, but I was reviewing the communications plus on the monitors, so I, uh, noticed the note down there, reference to your current computer is not capable of handling five monitors. So is that, it's set up to do that, or it's?
Yes, we have IT, yes, our IT department has gotten the, uh, towers to work on the monitors to support everything that we have in there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution R-22-06-76. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council waived the bid process and authorize and approve the City of Groton to purchase two motor vehicle in-car camera systems from Broadcast Microwave Services LLC 12305 Crossway Circle, Poay, California, for a total of $11,755 and 50 cents, with $5,877 and 75 cents to be paid from current year police department capital reserve fund appropriations, and $5,877 and 75 cents to be paid from the current fiscal year police operating budget. ISO move.
We have a motion and a second. Chief?
Okay, with the, uh, we have two older cars that are the Crown Victorias, and those are cameras and monitors that do not work with the present upgrades of our new system. Therefore, we have to, um, upgrade the, those as well. And with those two that we're getting, one of them is not going in the Crown Vic, it is going in the new, uh, Chevy Tahoe that we have now. So the old, one of the other ones, the second one, will go into the older Crown Vic until we get the new car, and it'll be transferred over to the, the next new car.
Any questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
We only get one car a year, so far.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution dash 22 dash 06 dash 77. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council authorize and approve the purchase of equipment to outfit the police department's Chevrolet Tahoe from Communications Plus LLC 84 Salem Turnpike, Norwich, Connecticut, for a total cost of $10,233 and no cents to be paid from current year police department capital reserve fund appropriations. ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Chief?
Okay, these items are to go and equip the new Chevy Tahoe that we received, um, in the, this year's budget. With the new Tahoe, we all ha, we have right now the Fords, and we are going to the Chevy Tahos to see if they are, uh, mechanically more sound than the Fords that we've had, uh, a few issue, issues with. But when we go to a new car, we need to equip it with all new stuff. In the past, we've been able to use the light bars from the older cars and the radios from the older cars. We'll still use the same radio from the older cars, but we need the new light bars, the new sirens and stuff like that, because it has to fit the new Tahoe. Um, so everything's going to be new in that to fit in the new car.
Any other question, any questions or comments regarding this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. You are adjourned. Thank you, council, for coming out tonight, Chief. Thank you. Thank you, Edward. Thank you, Counselor Sheffield.